Okay, we are going to get started. Welcome to our Bountiful City Council meeting Tuesday, October 11th, and we are grateful to have you here, and I'd like to welcome you tonight. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance from Jim Clark from our Planning Commission, and we'll follow that with a prayer by President Scott Allen from the Stone Creek State.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are grateful for this beautiful evening, for the opportunity we have to gather for this council meeting. We are grateful to Thee for the favorable circumstances that we enjoy, for the beautiful day that we've enjoyed today. We are grateful for the wonderful community in which we live and for the freedoms that we enjoy here. We are grateful for Thy hand in guiding and blessing our lives. We are thankful for the opportunity to gather for this meeting this evening and pray for Thy guidance and Thy Spirit to be with here. We are grateful for our city officials for their service and pray that Thou will bless and help them with wisdom and with understanding. Pray heavenly Father for Thy guidance and Thy Spirit to be with here. Be with us this evening. We are grateful for the community that we feel, for the opportunity to enjoy one another and to be strengthened by one another and to have the opportunity to care for each other. And pray heavenly Father Thou will bless and help us to be mindful of that, to be able to do those things that we can, to ease the burdens of those that we come in contact with. We are so thankful for the blessings of Thy Son, our Savior Jesus Christ, and pray that we might focus on Him, that we might follow His teachings, that we might be able to do those things that would draw us closer to Him and be able to-
Why reinvent what we have?
...from the blessing of the life of Jesus Christ and the mission in our lives. We pray once again for Thy Spirit to guide and bless and help us. We love Thee and pray for these things. In the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you so much for that beautiful prayer. And thank you to Jim Clark for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. We will now consider Resolution 2022-18 allowing electronic participation by Richard Higginson. There is a change also in the resolution where there was just one incorrect date-
On the second whereas.
Thank you, the second whereas clause.
Would you like a motion to that effect, Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend Resolution 2022-18 in the second whereas clause to change the date to October 11th, 2022, and also the pronoun from her to him. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And now if we want to just see if we can hear, Councilman Higginson, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Perfect.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. That's perfect. So glad you can participate with us tonight.
Thank you for voting me in.
We will now move to our public comment period where anyone who wishes to speak can come and speak for two minutes. And please, when you come up, state your name and your address. There will be a total of 10 minutes of public comment period time, and we'd love to hear from you now.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Joel Powell. I'm a resident of unincorporated Davis County. I wish to make a clear communication to Bountiful City Council. Forgive me for reading, but I'm doing it to keep on time. We are in the midst of being considered by North Salt Lake City to be annexed by them. I personally have been among the residents gathering in protest to that action. I would dare say that a majority of my fellow residents feel that if we must be annexed, we would rather be annexed by Bountiful City. Historically, we have been resistant to any annexation. Had our forefathers known that the last time that they refused Bountiful's bid to annex us, that it would lead to what now appears to being forced into North Salt Lake, I hope they would have chosen to go with Bountiful, but that is clearly water under the bridge. If by some small chance we can beat the odds and currently dodge the bullet of being annexed by North Salt Lake by our protest, then I hope our populace will be in favor of petitioning Bountiful City to consider annexing us. I realize this is not an overnight decision, that there's a lot that goes into it, that we as a populace would have to consider ourselves lucky for Bountiful to give us some serious thought. I'm not seeking an immediate response to this communication, but if indeed we become annexed to North Salt Lake, it is a moot point, and I understand that. But if we can get North Salt Lake to back off for the present, I would like to be officially advised as to how we can, as a populace, seek Your consideration if the future circumstances allow. So I'm not asking for action right now. Today, I'm basically trying to communicate our populace's preference and see if it makes any difference to you, and hopefully somewhere down the line, if we are not annexed, that maybe you'll give us your official opinion on the matter. So if I may give this to someone?
Sure. Thank you. Would you be willing, does this have your contact information? Okay. Thank you so much. Any other comments tonight?
Okay, I brought my son here for moral support because I'm super nervous. So last week, a student at South Davis Junior High was hit at about 3:00 PM while crossing the street near the school and was ran over with sustaining multiple injuries. If you don't think this is a major issue, then check out the Facebook posts. Nearly 50 comments about this issue on You Know You Are From Bountiful page. Also, last week, my son was crossing at the crosswalk in front of his school at 4:45 AM and would have been hit if I hadn't warned him. I'm grateful I can be there to walk with my kids to school, but not every child can or should have their parents there to warn them. I appreciate my son's principal, who when I emailed her, called me the next day and voiced her concern, and is willing to do what she can to advocate for change. More kids are biking and walking, and that is not going to change. Thank goodness. What needs to change is making our streets safer and a change in mentality for all those that drive, walk, or use micro mobility. I'm sure the easiest thing to do is direct me to the traffic safety meeting, and I agree, there are some solutions that were discussed at the last meeting that could help with long-term change. I won't deny that. But safety for our kids is a long-term issue, and we need some short-term solutions. While I appreciate the help police enforcement can be, their monitoring efforts will at best make only temporary change because we as humans so easily revert back to what we are used to. We need something tactical that will take us out of our autopilot and help us think more critically while we navigate, especially in our cars. I'm willing to do all I can to help now. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Court De Lost. I wonder if I could leave some pictures up there with you? I'm Mayor City Council. All the county enforcement officials and city manager. My name's Court De Lost. I live at 310 South, 750 East in Bountiful. I'm joined today by some dear neighbors of mine, Jim and Linda Clark and my wife, who reside next to me. Concerning the building at 425 Medical Drive, it's been abandoned for approximately one and a half years, and the property owners put fencing around the perimeter, presumably have secured the premises. But in January of 2022, I noticed there are some tracks leading to the property, and noticed those tracks went through a gap in the fencing on the northwest corner of our property and the southeast corner of 415 Medical Drive. In February, from our deck, we noticed men entering the property and disappearing into the building on the east side. We concluded they may be copper thieves or homeless individuals, so we called the police, who subsequently searched the building with SWAT. One of those pictures is a SWAT officer with a canine on the top of that building. But they came up empty in the search. He must have snuck away before they got there. We became concerned about this opening in the fence and that others might start trespassing as well. Our fear is that if youth of this city began to trespass, they could possibly run into a copper thief, a squatter, or a drug user. On February 19th, 2022, we decided to put a game camera on a tree bordering our property and tried to document individuals and also increase our attention from the deck to the goings-on at the property. That same day, we put the camera up. We encountered on the camera two different groups of youth. From that point till now, there's been almost a daily occurrence of trespassers, mostly curious youth to destructive vandals and thieves. I'm sorry, but I'd just like to get an opportunity maybe to send these letters to you so you can address these issues. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
My name's Thomas Paul. I'm also from unincorporated Davis County. I'd just like to follow up with the remarks that Joel had made about being annexed to North Salt Lake. We were given basically a week and a half to make a response to the county saying that, no, we don't want to have this. We have only 49% of our community that was able to gather and respond. This is something that we have always enjoyed, the friendship that we have had with Bountiful. We have Bountiful addresses. We have many businesses in this area that will suffer greatly from this annexation. They expressed this to the county commission, and they ignored it. I think it'd be a great opportunity for Bountiful to annex us with little, I know the cost of utilities would not be that much. We contract all our utilities. The street signs are already in place. I think it'd be a nice fit for us. And again, my name's Thomas Paul, and I am the caucus, what am I now? I've been serving in our precinct as the precinct chair for our area, and this is a very hot topic and something that we would rather be in Bountiful than North Salt Lake. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to just have my voice documented that this is something that we would like to see. And by the way, I did grow up in Bountiful. It was a wonderful place.
Thank you. We have time for one last public comment if anyone would like to speak. Thank you very much for being here tonight and for your comments. It's now time for us to consider approval of the minutes of previous meetings held September 27th.
Still moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have a youth council report tonight?
Looks like, okay. The youth council is busy with ACT prep and other activities.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to our council reports. We'll start with Councilman Higginson.
Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. If you'll let me know if I get too loud or sound unusually obnoxious, that would be great. I wanted to weigh in if I could on the landscaping ordinance discussion. There was a section on what's page nine of our packet under B number six concerning the additions to homes requiring homeowners to comply with the current landscape ordinance, should it be adopted. And I think it would be great if we could have the ordinance prepared so that that could be removed at its adoption or retained at its adoption rather than making a decision tonight. Since it was a tie vote, maybe that will be the case. I don't really have any other report other than to let you know that we have a tour of a facility in Oregon scheduled for tomorrow in which we would be educated further on the potential of nuclear power being available, maybe in the midterm. So anyway, we'll keep you posted on what we find out tomorrow on this trip, and appreciate you allowing me to participate remotely.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. Councilwoman Segura Barr, do you have a report tonight?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Price Uish.
Nothing to report tonight, but I did just want to say, since we have Planning Commissioner Jim Clark here, I do want to give a shout out to the Planning Commission and just thank them for all of the hard work, research, time, and effort they put in to making well-thought-out recommendations. So thank you, Jim, and everybody else.
That's great. Yes, thank you. It is an excellent planning commission. Thank you. I'll just report briefly. We attended the Utah League of Cities and Towns convention this last week. It was nice. We had all council members attended, and it was a great opportunity to learn new things about what's going on in the state. Also, we heard from Governor. We had a number of great sessions, and it made me even more grateful than ever for the work that the League of Utah, the Utah League of Cities and Towns does in terms of legislation, prevention, and also support. They really go to bat for cities, so things that the legislature wants to do that could impact cities negatively or help cities, it really is wonderful for them to be working on our behalf and to work in partnership with them. So anyway, it was a good experience. And anybody else that would like to chime in about the conference, feel free. Do you have a report tonight, Councilman Bell?
I do. I'd like to just make everyone aware that the Bountiful City Youth Council will be holding a pumpkin walk intended for youth. It'll be held at North Canyon Park on the 22nd of October. And also, we'll start seeing posters or announcements for our Christmas concert coming up that has traditionally been held at Woods Cross High with the R.J. Ringlers. This year, it will be the Super Band. Great Christmas theme, and tickets will go on sale on November 1st for that.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Bradshaw.
Sure. Two quick updates to my neighbors that noted the concerns at the old medical lab building. Staff has been made aware. It's on my dog walking route since I see Jim Clark many mornings. I'm doing that route, and so I've noticed the same concerns, and so staff has been made aware of them, so rest assured they're aware. The second update is the REC District Board met last week in a planning retreat to start the important work of addressing the budget for the next fiscal cycle for the REC District Board. I know everyone is interested that we get that budget process right and do the things that will help ensure that that budget is sustainable and so that the district is able to look at future plans with some budget stability going forward. The work is starting, but it is going to be, I think, a longer budget process to work through some of those issues. And I know several folks have also received emails from members of the community who had used a warm-water therapy pool that has closed because the property has been purchased. The REC District has offered passes to all of those seniors that want to try the REC District pools on a temporary basis to make sure that it would meet their needs without them having to buy a pass on their fixed income. So they've been offered those free passes. Many of them have checked out the facilities. For some, those recreation pools will work, for some they may not just because of pool access, or the recreation pools are not as warm as that therapy pool they had previously enjoyed. But the REC District is working hard to offer them a spot there for those physical therapy and physical fitness needs for that community. To the best of our abilities now, the expansion plans might be considered that might further address their needs.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment? Just while I was listening to fellow council member Bradshaw share her updates, I was reminded that she and I had an opportunity to attend the Utah Outdoor Recreation Summit this past week, and along with Bob Larson, who is on our TRALS, he's the chair of our TRALS committee. And I just, as a brief little update there, this is a wonderful effort, and Councilwoman or Member Bradshaw could also pipe in here. But it was really a wonderful opportunity to see how there's this high level of coordination going on between agencies, state government, local governments, TRALS committees, and to get all of this alignment and connectivity among the TRALS systems all throughout the Wasatch Front, east side, west side. And the thing that I really just wanted to share, Mayor, is that Bountiful is really the envy of so many cities around the state, and what is being done and the hard work that's been done by staff and fire councils on what, on our TRALS development and the TRALS committee. And I really felt, if I remembered that, I would be remiss to not say a big thank you to everybody involved with that because all across the straight state, people are looking at Bountiful and what's happening here, and they're excited about our piece of that puzzle.
Thank you. Well said. We will now consider approval of expenditures greater than $1,000, paid September 19th and 26th, as well as the August 2022 financial report.
Mayor, I'd move to approve those as printed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We will now consider approval of an in-house recycling proposal, Mr. Charles Benson. And just for some clarification, we're not considering doing recycling in Bountiful, but the recycling collection. So please, we'll turn the time over to you, Charles. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we are looking at the collection. We currently are doing recycling in Bountiful. So this would be following the direction that we had in the last meeting about this. I contacted ACE about regarding the purchase of the cans, and they came back favorably on that. So going into the analysis of this, the direction that Bountiful provide recycling collection service with city staff and equipment, that's a large undertaking, but will benefit the residents of Bountiful both the short term and long term. So as for the startup costs, the city has spare refuse trucks that we currently have right now that I use in our sanitation fleet. We can use those trucks, and we'll save for the new trucks in the budgeting process. So we're not planning on buying any new trucks right now. We'll use those, and I'll plan to buy one in fiscal year '26 and '29 after we have saved up the monies for that. The cost for operating the refuse trucks will be diverted from the funds we would have paid to ACE at this time for their contracted use. As for the next part, the council would need to authorize two additional full-time employees to operate the recycling collection trucks. We need time to recruit the employees, to train them, to safely operate the equipment and empty the containers in the daily collection routes. Our staff that covers for when our current sanitation routes are sick or out for any reason could step in for a time to help if needed, if the recruiting process takes more time than anticipated. The cost for the employees would be diverted from the funds that we're currently using to pay ACE for that collection service. So when I contacted ACE regarding the possibility of purchasing or leasing the recycling containers in place around the town, ACE responded favorably to the option of leasing and selling the carts to Bountiful. After some discussion, a price of $1,000 a month to lease the current containers for seven months at a price, and purchase the containers at a price of $40 a container, or a total of $522,000 to purchase 13,065 containers that are in place around town. That would be in July 2023. That would be in the next fiscal budget that we're looking at that. That would allow time for us to lease the containers and then go through the budgeting process to allocate those funds and identify where they've come from, and purchase the containers after July in next fiscal year. So we'd be coming back for that information. So this cart purchase, purchasing them from ACE will save us $415,360 over buying brand-new containers, as we had quoted in the earlier, plus the labor and costs of delivering all the cans and picking up the other cans that are out in the city at this time. We feel that those cans that are currently in use will last at least another 15 years, if not longer. And the ACE logo will come off with some mild solvent, and then we can put on whatever we would like to do at that time. So the next page of the report shows an updated spreadsheet of what the costs are. With the purchasing the cans, we'll actually be breaking even with our current costs as we are right now in place versus if the increase that ACE is proposing would be $70,000 in the hole and have to look at raising rates. So as for the accounting plan, the recycling operation is closely related to and benefits both the sanitation and landfill operations. With staff's recommendation of bringing the recycling collection in-house, staff believes it's important for the recycling operation to be rolled into the same external accounting and budgeting fund that the landfill and sanitation are now in. The proposed changes, the fund would be so interconnected that it would be reasonable and beneficial to report them as one fund from an external financial reporting and budgeting perspective. Internally, staff will continue to track the sanitation, landfill, and recycling operations separately as a management tool to evaluate rates, fees, and ensure the financial health of each operation. During the budgeting process, the city council will also continue to review and approve them as separate departments. However, externally, these three funds would be reported as a single reporting unit to properly reflect their interdependence and simplify reporting. This report's been reviewed by the recycling department, public works director, the finance director, and the city manager. It makes sense to make this change in the current contract ends. Bringing the recycling collection in-house will help control costs and improve customer service. Recommendation is that due to the various economics and operating benefits to Bountiful City residents, staff recommends the recycling collection service be taken in-house and provided by Bountiful City personnel and staff. Staff recommends the city council approve the following three items. Authorize staff to move forward with the in-house recycling collection service beginning December 1st, and hire two full-time employees to operate the collection trucks. Enter into a recycling cart lease agreement with ACE Recycling for seven months, period, until the full purchase of those carts can be approved through the budgeting process. Authorize staff to move forward with the external financial reporting and budgeting consolidation of the recycling fund into the sanitation and landfill fund effective this fiscal year 2023. Any questions I would like to entertain?
I've got one more. So Charles, I wanted to make sure I understood the budget spreadsheet correctly. The non, or sorry, the total revenue, $585,000 and change, that money is all derived from the $3.75 can the residents are paying, correct?
Correct.
So at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you have the line of from the landfill of $75,000. Does this mean we would no longer need to subsidize the recycling from the landfill? landfill?
That is a possibility. It's all dependent on the market conditions of the recycling costs right now. Unfortunately, this last month, it just went up a little bit more than we anticipated. So that's there. It's already been approved of that transfer. It's there as a backup if we need it.
And so in contrast, in column B on the spreadsheet, not only, we would, we would need that entire subsidy approximately, maybe?
Yes.
With, with the exception of maybe a few thousand dollars, we would, we would definitely require that transfer to take place.
That is correct.
On, on the, the two columns, A and B, where, where does the value of the recycled items come in? Is that the Rocky Mountain recycling charges line of $86,000 and change?
That's correct. That's, that's where it's at right now. We're actually paying to have it recycled.
That's, those answer my budget questions. Thank you.
I just had one quick question. With the recycling, the 15-year payment plan, so are we planning on paying that out over 15 years? Wasn't, I mean, it didn't say it in the report, but then it shows it with, for the cans.
Right. Yes. We're, we're looking at, at paying back that fund through the?
Oh, the paying through, okay.
Paying back the $522,000.
Okay. But we would pay for them all at once and then pay back the fund?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Charles, I just want to say I had a lot of questions last time when you came and presented this program. And I really appreciate this report this time because every question I had, I felt like was answered and was really, it, I think this is going to be a benefit to the city and to the residents. And I'm really grateful that our streets department has the bandwidth to bring on this program and to help our residents. So thank you for all the work you've done on this.
It's a group effort.
Any other questions for Charles?
I just want to tell Charles thanks as well, if that's okay. And I would like Charles to take the thanks and not deflect it to someone else.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
I have a question. Can you help me just understand what the admin services entails of the 59,000? It looks like it's gone down this year or projected to go down this year from previous years.
Yes, that's a fee that we pay, that all the enterprise funds pays the city hall for their services that they perform for us. The billing services, the accounting services, and all of that. Tyson goes through and comes up with a, and Galen, you're probably a part of that as well.
Yeah, it's, it's something that goes through the budget process, but it's too, as if the, the enterprise funds are separate businesses, what they would have to pay for those services if they were going external to the city doing it. So it is taking our time, materials, that type of thing for payroll, for legal services, accounting, everything that needs to be mentioned.
Fantastic. Well, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the curbside recycling collection and as, as recommended to hire two full-time positions, purchase, oh, sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the leasing of the cans for seven months, is there any, is that already contracted or could ACE change their mind in seven months?
That's part of this agreement that we're going to do. It's kind of a lease-by agreement that we're going to be working into.
Okay.
Make this agreement go.
Just want to make sure nobody can change their mind in seven months. Okay. Number two, enter into the recycling cart lease agreement with ACE for seven months and purchase those through the budget process and then authorize the staff to forward, go move forward with the external financial reporting, budgeting consolidation of the recycling fund into the sanitation and landfill fund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, excellent. Thank you. Just as a note, we have a little, we have a program at city hall where if someone comes up with a great idea, that's an employee that, that's going to be savings for our, for our departments, then we have, we offer a little bonus for them being, thinking out of the box and being willing to, being willing to look for ways to save money. And so I'd like to just ask that we consider this for Charles because, because of his work here in order to save us money. So we'll, we'll talk about that. But I, I'm grateful that you're willing to think out of the box and even something that is going to be more work for you, you were willing to put it forward as an idea and it's a great idea. So thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to be happy to make a motion that we formally explore using that, that incentive program to make sure that we reward employees who help save the taxpayers' money and provide better service.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you so much, Charles.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Okay, we will now consider approval of ordinance 2022-09, amending the development plan for Renaissance Lot 11. Mr. Astorga.
Thank you. A development plan amendment is treated in, it's not treated, it is a zone change by definition in that when a site is changed or rezoned to MXDR or whatever type of predominant land use designation, a development plan gets incorporated. That development plan specifies specific rules for that development such as height, setbacks, uses. All different sorts of, of development parameters are established in that zone change. That's only unique to, to the MXD. That's the mixed-use zone. We're back at Renaissance Town Center specifically on Lot 11 as currently plotted, which is located on the northwest corner of Main Street and 1800 South. To give you a little bit of history, and if you want to follow along, we're on page 47 of our packets. The city had a huge zone change for the entire property, all of Renaissance Town Center, formerly known as the Five Points Mall site, in that it rezoned the site generally from general commercial to mixed-use residential. That took place in May of 2019. In April of 2021, the city entertained the first, the first amendment to that. All those changes are reflected on the bottom of page 47. Whatever site is shown in purple in those callouts were those specific changes. So currently, we're looking at, here is identified as Lot 19. That's what the, the development plan called this site. We refer it here as it's been replatted as Lot 11. So currently, the property owner, who was Brian Knowlton, is requesting several changes that are listed on the top of page 48. 12,500 square feet of non-residential space on the southeast corner of 1800 South and Renaissance Town Drive with a maximum building height of 69 feet or five stories. The other amendment is changing the apartment building that was contemplated to be there. Actually, it was approved by the city as it was presented to the planning commission, city council through a site plan application and it met the code. And that was a 26 apartment or unit apartment building on that same corner. Now the developer wants to build 17 townhouses with a maximum or approximate building height of 35 feet. In order to add clarity to their request, staff, we created this chart on the bottom of page 48 and 49. The gray box simply says what the 2019 development plan indicated. The middle box, that darker green, is how we amended that specific site in 2021. And then the lighter green box on the right-hand side specifies the specific change. So in order for us to amend these parameters, we have to go back and have a legislative amendment to the development plan. And that's why we have the ordinance that has the specificity on how the applicant or even the planning commission forwarded a, a recommendation regarding this, this item. If, if we have any other subsequent questions about the process, I'll be more than happy to expand. Regarding the use, the original use of the site was in 2019 approved as an office. It was a change to residential in 2021. The applicant now wishes to take a mixed-use development and have mixed use within this specific site by introducing, I think what I called in the staff report was the non-residential uses. Staff looked at that, the planning commission did too, and we don't have any issues in that change of use. We incorporated other thoughts and comments in the staff report, but I'm simply summarizing for you. The next item is the change that, it, it literally affected the square footage as well as the use. There, it's not a big change in that, that site plan approval had contemplated those 26 residential units. There were apartment buildings, three stories on top of a parking garage. It was approximately 39,000 square feet. The overall square footage is approximately 41,000 of what they're proposing, not a big change as this development plan is part of a bigger development. The next item is the maximum building height originally approved. That, it had triple standard. It said that, the development plan said it's 42 feet, it's two floors, and another portion said it's one to two stories. That was part of that big cleanup that we did in 2021 where we simply came back and said, more of a definitive, definitive measurement where it was requested by the applicant to cap it at 46. We provided, the city provided that maximum building height. The applicant now requests to build the non-residential space submitted at 69 feet of, of that corner, that darker corner of that area, and I could go back and show you, but then keep the townhouses at approximately three stories or 35 feet. Speaking specifically about that, and where I'm going to take you to page 51 to further explain, the, the, the north is up on this map. And, and as you can see here on the right-hand side, I'm sorry, on the left-hand side, on the right side of that image, you see Main Street and then you see 1800 South labeled on the bottom. We're on page 51 of the staff report. The additional building height that the applicant is requested is in the darker gray. I just want to make sure that we all follow along in that. Are we okay on that? And then the lighter gray are the 17 townhouses that the applicant wants to keep. So that, that additional building height is only on that corner of what would be 1800 South and Renaissance Town Center. The image as viewed from across the street, possibly from the southwest side, you would be standing on, on the car dealership is what would be represented on the top of page 51 on the right-hand side. The planning commission agreed with the staff recommendation, which provides more of a, a better transition, if you will, as you can see with the red line on the bottom of page 51, to provide a better transition from the three stories in the residential uses to the non-residential, residential uses of that specific node. At the planning commission meeting, the applicant didn't disagree with losing that fifth story in order to have a better balance between what is there. That is the second ask regarding building height, which would be to have a limit of maximum building height of the non-residential building to 55 feet that would transition to the proposed townhouses, which have a max, maximum building height of 42. The applicant actually, they want to, those townhouses, they would be much less than 42. It would be about 35. That's the, the height parameter. The next item is a, the setback ask, as requested by the property owner. We're on the bottom of page 52 on your packets. There are three proposed townhouses to be placed along Main Street on the corner there of Main Street and 1800 South. The overall development plan indicated everywhere a minimum setback of five feet everywhere with, with the exception of Main Street, which was anticipated to have a minimum setback of 20 feet. There's a further exception to that, which was for parking garages, but we're not dealing with that in this specific case. Knowing that there's a five-foot parameter and 20-foot on Main Street, every single corner of each parcel, I would, has a 10-foot public utility easement. So even though, even though the, the development plan back from May of 2019 authorized a five-foot setback, it's really more of a 10-foot setback based on that public utility easement, with the exception of Main Street. Again, that was indicated at 20 feet. Because this is a legislative item and the mixed-use code allows you to fluctuate parameters. That's why some of the other sites have taller building sites. And, and I do wish, just to quickly on the top of page 53, I did recognize some typos on that sentence in the middle of that paragraph. As for example, the allowed heights along Main Street are as follow. I wrote 65 feet for Renaissance Town Center Site 10. I apologize. That's, that's Site 14. That's what I've dug. I, I, I called the big boy. It's the 287 apartment building that's, that's currently in review through, through our office. The next statement was 70 feet for RTC Renaissance Town Center Site 14. It is 65 feet, which is, which is reflected on the first page of the staff report. I'm sorry. The, the second sentence, I wrote 70 feet. I apologize. I was supposed to be a 60 feet for Site 10. And the last one I did get right, which is 110 feet for Renaissance Town Center 11. That's the biggest, or I'm sorry, the tallest building, more so in the middle of the site. So I, I wanted to clarify those, those types, those typos and I apologize for, for the discrepancy. The reason what I, why I thought it was relevant to add those specific sites was the, the reasoning why the city chose a 20-foot setback on Main Street where everywhere else it would be much less than that. And in looking at the development and what has happened, it, it, the city tried to be sensitive to the single-family residential uses on the east side of Main Street, which would be capped at approximately 35 feet. By adding additional 20-foot setback along this site, plus the master planning that went on for a few months, probably in 2018 and 2019, they, that's how they were able to appropriate these specific sites that, that have the 65, 70, and 110. So I just, I just wanted to make a point in that that was a major reason of why a 20-foot setback. And, and all those heights are shown on the very, very first page of the staff report, page 47. As Lot 10, the 60-story, I'm sorry, 60-foot building, that's future development at the Maverick Site. The one just south of the current Renaissance Tower One is the, the tallest building, which is not under construction. That's 110 feet. And then the 287 unit apartment building, which is, has been approved by site, it, it has received site plan approval. Based on that and the current placing of the parking structure, that's why it was indicated or a major reason why an additional setback of 20 feet from Main Street would be applied to the development. The applicant requests a 10-foot setback from Main Street only on these three units. It were on the bottom of page 52 with that red circle. The planning commission had motion after motion and unfortunately, there were only six members at night and it was a tie, three-way tie, three-three tie, three-three tie, probably three or four times. There was no consensus on that until somebody finally made a motion to simply say, let's just split the difference and go with 15. And that alleviated or, or allowed the, the commission to move forward with, with that positive 6-0 vote at 15 feet. There was no additional thought process other than some members wanted to keep it at 20, while some members wanted to keep it at 10. And that's why, that's, that's why the 15 was appropriated. I do write in the staff report how the I do write in the staff report how the city engineer disagrees with that recommendation. And maybe I shouldn't have said disagreed, but recommends a different action in that Lloyd is more concerned with that public utility easement and the feasibility of any heavy equipment that may need to go to that location. And he could further expand on that. I don't want to speak on his behalf. I think Lloyd will keep you for questions unless you want to comment on that at this time.
I'll be happy to respond to any questions you have, but I think it's, my position's been fairly stated.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the statements on page 53 at the top? Just to make sure I understand correctly. So the applicant asked for 10 feet on Main Street for the three townhouse units. Planning staff supported the request for 10 feet. Your reason for supporting it is that the other properties along Main Street are as currently proposed significantly taller than the townhouses. And so with greater height, he wanted greater step back from the street. And your reason for supporting 10 feet was lower height, therefore closer move to the street was warranted. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
Correct.
Thank you.
So this is a legislative item in that it's an amendment to the development plan. So it's up to the specific land use authority as we are revising the current parameters. That's what this application is. Moving on to the design standards, we're on page 54. The, a development plan does require that conceptual building elevations be submitted. We honored the renderings that were provided that implied heavy brick. And we are more than happy with that specific material. We simply, if we move forward, and by the way, the commission agreed, it would be to, what did I write here? I'm just going to read what I wrote. Planning commission agree with staff's specific recommendation regarding design standards, which includes brick as a primary material to be used as reflected on the submitted exterior perspective. We also find that adding windows and/or architectural details on the upper stories of the non-residential building along the rear and side elevations as well as windows on the side elevations of the townhouses as seen from the north. So those are the blue circles that I have in that we need more fenestration, more windows, so we don't get blank walls. Obviously, specificity would be reviewed during a site plan review should this application be approved. But we don't want to forget that these lovely exhibits that show a significant amount of brick on here, which there's a reason why conceptual building elevations are indeed required during a development plan review. The planning commission did not disagree with that. Following along for site planning, the planning commission did not move forward with this specific staff recommendation, which was simply staff was trying to get, we're on top of page 56. It's that orange, yellowish reddish circle there. That staff made a recommendation to try to get more usable open space as in the interior layout of the development, which is primarily used for asphalt. The building is not as efficient in terms of land area versus landscaping found throughout. The planning commission did not agree with staff's recommendation as staff simply requested to remove the four units in the middle of the site. I'll be more than happy to expand on that specific recommendation if necessary. It was a simple push for usable open space. With that said, we have prepared an ordinance for you to consider, starting on page 59. And items one through six on page 60 are the appropriate standards that would need to follow up on this ordinance should you move forward with a planning commission, with the planning commission's recommendation. But as you know, you are the land use authority on all legislative items, and you have the ability to accept these changes, modify these changes, and you have several other options. I'll be more than happy to answer any other questions that you might have. Mr. Brian Knowlton is here. He's here to answer any questions that you might have for him. But this is a legislative item. It does require a public hearing. We do recommend that you move forward with the planning commission's recommendation as written and drafted on page 59, 60 of the packet here.
Okay, before we go to a public hearing, what questions do you have, counsel?
I'm just wondering if everybody would benefit from Lloyd just discussing with the map on the screen, the easements, using a pointer just for all of our benefit. The setbacks? Yeah, the easements and how they relate to that space and the setbacks. Maybe the measurements of, I mean, we can see the map, but like sidewalk is this distance. And park strip is three feet.
Can I add a layer of question or an answer to that as you're explaining? I'm, I'm curious to know, I didn't quite follow the reasoning of 20 feet. And so I just, I want to know why it needs to be 20 feet, in your opinion? I didn't quite get a full picture of that need.
Where would you like me to start? Would you like me to start answering that question or? I'll start with the 20-foot setback question. So this may be more of a personal opinion than maybe a engineering judgment. Setbacks to busy streets are very important. And I understand the environment that is at stake here and what is proposed. The members of the planning commission, which expressed the desire to create a walkable community. And I understand the elements that contribute to those kinds of environments. In my opinion, a 20-foot setback is a very minimal setback for a building where it's a residential use. Main Street carries a significant amount of traffic and will continue to carry a significant amount of traffic. In my opinion, that may not be particularly desirable, a desirable environment. It may not, and I may be completely wrong, I may be completely out of my lane. But that's my opinion, that 20 feet is too close. Now, given the fact that I'm going to confine this part of the discussion to Main Street. Based on the drawings that we were given to look at, they appear a little bit schematic in nature. And at the time of my review, I was not aware that there had been changes to the utilities that had previously been reviewed and approved on the site. My expectation for the utility easements around the perimeter of the development were that they were future use easements. That these would remain unused for some time. There wouldn't be any utilities in them immediately. It's come to my attention that that's not the case. There's been some rerouting of utilities, and now we're faced with a situation which has been my concern and has been the main driver for my concern about having such a minimal setback. I mean, really, for the front of a building to a street, 20 feet's pretty minimal, in my opinion. Now we have an eight-inch water line in service. And we all know that those lines don't last forever. There will come a time when the City Water Department crews will have to show up to perform some kind of maintenance on those. And less setback, less than that may make it difficult for them to do their work and for other utilities in the near future. Well, in the future, we don't know what other utilities may want to use those spaces for. We certainly wouldn't want to create a situation where a waterline break would put in jeopardy private property. And the city have to pay a claim on something like that. Or maintenance work could be very inconvenient for those residents. You can have a series of front doors right there, right next to those utility lines. Not everyone is patient and tolerant about those things. So those are, those are my concerns about that easement. As I became aware, let's talk about the spacing here. So
Zoom is a little bit limiting us in that regard right now. I don't know what it would do exactly to Francisco may be able to share his screen, so we'll try that.
So in the course of discussion after the planning commission's meeting, meeting with the developer, we discussed what, what the layout of the street improvements were on Main Street. So you have curb and gutter, approximately a three-foot park strip, a four-foot sidewalk, and then a space that's seven or eight feet to the property line. And then the 10-foot easement. So to the back of the sidewalk, it would appear that there is about 17 or 18 feet. That's, that's a pretty significant space. But in the future, if the city needed to utilize the full width of the right-of-way, you know, that would, that space would certainly decrease. I have no objection to the planning commission's motion or recommendation for 15 feet. I don't take any issue with that. I'm happy to live with whatever recommendation or motion or amendment you make to this. I'm simply providing my opinion that we need to provide, we need to be thoughtful for the future. We need to provide, not only for city utilities, adequate space to maintain those utilities, but also for other utilities that are yet to come. Do you have any other questions about Main Street, Main Street site? There is a paragraph in the staff report that says that we do still have some reservations about the 10-foot easement. And that is particularly true on 1800 South. Because 1800 South does not have the benefit of an extra seven or eight feet from the back of the sidewalk to the property line. On 1800 South, the property line is essentially at the back of the sidewalk. So the fronts of those buildings on 1800 South are going to be 10 feet from the sidewalk. And in that 10-foot easement is currently an eight-inch water line and the power system. With the water line being closest to the buildings. That is concerning to me because you typically don't bring a wheelbarrow and a couple of shovels to dig up someone's front yard door on a water line. And those are going to have a lot of windows, front doors, landscaping, those kinds of things. It's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to work in that area. And again, I think we need to look forward to our needs in the future.
So Lloyd, in front, in front of the screen here, I've got the, oh, am I? I've got the plat, which shows a 10-foot public utility easement along the exterior boundary along here on Main Street, 1800 South, and along Renaissance Town Drive. This easement that goes through about the middle of the project, there is no water line there and it's about to be, what's the correct word?
That easement was vacated.
Was vacated, was released, but there is a 10-foot easement, public utility easement surrounding the property.
There is an existing utility easement on the north side of Lot 11. So in that space where the pointer is, and then as you go west on the north side of the, you're going to have to go down that hatched area, that is a recorded, those are recorded utility easements that are effective now.
May I ask a clarifying question about the 10-foot easement around that perimeter of this parcel? Well, of parcel 11 and 12. Was the easement misinterpreted as a setback? Or was it a miscommunication on our part? And did I miss, am I correct in understanding that at one point it was communicated to the developer that 10 feet was enough?
No.
No, okay.
We've always looked at the development plan, those approved in May of 2019, that simply had a blanket statement. All setbacks are five feet except for Main Street, which is 20.
Okay.
With the exception of parking pads, which could be five, except. But that's what the development plan, that's how it reads.
So could, but could, do we, was there, was the easement misinterpreted as the setback?
I think Lloyd, I don't, I would say that it wasn't part of the discussion back in 2019. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I would think so.
Do you know what the setback is? Is it called the Utah Ice Center? The building that's just south of Renaissance? Yeah, that's right on the corner there by the roundabout. Do you know what the setback is there?
I don't.
It looks like it's zero. I haven't researched files, but it's, it looks like it's zero.
Yeah, it was, it was zero and it was under a previous approval. But that's, it's been amended several times since then.
Thank you for that. What other questions do you have, counsel?
Mary, when could I offer just a tiny bit of clarifying information just from planning commission? There was, and whatever direction we go tonight, I did want to just say, it was, it was a thoughtful discussion, I thought, by the planning commission. And as related by Francisco, there were a lot of, this, this point was the most discussed issue, the setback on Main Street. And for some of the reasons that have already been discussed tonight. And so I just want to kind of go over those again. And, you know, the kind of historical context of this property, the integrity of the plan and the setback going along the entire Main Street was a consideration of having a contiguous plan, engineer's recommendation, traffic. But then there were other considerations about ideas that things closer to the street do add traffic calming. I don't have the information on that, but I wanted to give additional context that there is an alternate, you know, view that being closer to the street can be calming, traffic calming. I don't, I don't have the data on that. But my question for Lloyd is with a 10-foot easement, I mean, just kind of make or break on with the 10-foot easement on Main Street, do we have enough space to access power and water that's going through that? It may be more difficult, but can we access it reasonably in a 10-foot easement on the Main Street portion? That's, to me, the critical thing. If we can access it and the developer is, you know, willing to take that risk to his property, which is going to be considerable investment, that that I think is important information.
I would say from a maintenance perspective, our crews would always prefer to work in larger spaces. In areas where we have water lines or storm drain lines that run between properties or parallel to side yards or in rear yards, they can present challenges for performing maintenance. Can it be done? Yeah, it can be done. It takes more time. You have to be more careful. Restoration costs. As, as a user of a utility, we're obligated to restore some improvements. So if, depending on the types of landscaping or, or other improvements that are in there, the city may be obligated to replace those. Those are the considerations.
Are all the other buildings along Main Street slated for this project setback at 20 feet?
Francisco, could you pull up page 47?
I can't, I can't tell from that, that map.
Uh, as I recall, the, uh, on page 47, the big boy, there's a shift in, in the property line. But, uh, and Bruce Broadhead is here. I want to say that that building is setback 20 to 25 feet. Is that accurate, Bruce? And I, I do this off memory as we looked at the site plan and the building permit is in the office. It's, it, it ranges between 20 and 25, definitely meets the 20.
So, so if the other, I'm, I'm sorry, may I?
Maybe I could, yeah, if you don't mind.
No.
There's a reason why that building is setback and that's because of the high voltage per hour line.
Well-
So, so if I may, we know the reasons why the city wants it setback at 20 feet. May I ask the developer why they want it pushed forward to 10? Is that an appropriate question?
So, so we'll, we'll have, they'll, they'll, they'll come and, and speak.
Okay, when you speak, that, that's my question.
Yeah, that's a great question.
We know why the city wants it at 20. I'd like to know why you want it at 10.
Perfect. We'll, we'll hear from, help hear from them. What other questions do we have before we go to the public hearing and to the developers?
For either Lloyd or Francisco, do we anticipate that the easement that exists between Lot 11 and Lot 12 would be an easement that would be released since the easements of, the, the utilities that were considered for that spot would be released? Or were, were no longer needed?
I would say it depends on part of the outcome of tonight. It's always nice to have easements in places where easements might be convenient. But if it's a necessity for the development on this side, it could be released. And that would be a council action, so.
Any other questions? Okay, um, do you recommend that we now have a public hearing?
Could we hear from the developer first? I feel like that would be informative for us and likely any public-
Absolutely.
On why they're making the request.
Okay. Yep, um, we'll now invite Brian and Bruce to address us. And any questions that we, you've heard?
Mayor, City Council, I appreciate you considering this matter tonight. So, uh, I don't know if I want to start with the easement and the setback or kind of, well, let's do that and then I'll circle back to some other comments. So what we're, what we're asking is simply, and Francisco, if you could go to page, your site plan on page 52.
Sure thing.
So, uh, the 10-foot setback, which would correspond with the 10-foot easement, was actually something that we proposed. According to the staff report, Francisco was in support of it. I was not at planning commission, so I can't comment on that. We'll rely on Cecily. But the, a lot of the reasoning for that is off of Main Street, which is just these three units. The elevation of that building is two stories. Because it's three stories from the back with the parking. And on Main Street, it's two stories. In your packet, there is some proposed Main Street elevations that show that. The, the, a lot of the reasoning that got us here, first, I'm going to comment on the waterline. The waterline, according to design, was always going to be in the frontage of Lot 11 in the 10-foot easement. That's the way it always was. It was then going to go down between Lot 11 and Lot 12. The water department wanted to loop it around the street, which is way better and way more logical. Lloyd wasn't in the loop on that apparently, and I was not the installer of the waterline. I found out after the fact also. Okay? The reality of the utilities on Main Street is there's three feet between the sidewalk and the back of the curb and gutter. That's where your gas line exists. Okay? The waterline on Main Street is directly to the property side of the sidewalk. And that is in an eight-foot strip of land that the city owns. Not even in the easement, it's in city property. And then the 10-foot easement is where Vanniful Power just installed all their conduits. And literally, you can see the cancer in the conduits up now. That happened this week. So the quote 10-foot easement on Main Street currently is only for the power. The water is, and always was going to be in city property on Main Street. The change was as we went down 1800 South, which Lloyd commented on. Now you've got a 10-foot easement and you have power and water in there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Lloyd, but the clearances between power and water is three feet. Is that correct? Okay, so in that 10-foot easement, both the power company is happy with what they have, their space, and so is the water company. They have their clearances, they have their safety margins, everything's good. And, and this has made me, Lloyd, and I disagree, is if you have a 10-foot easement and an additional setback, you can't go there anyway servicing utilities in the easement. You, you literally cannot go past that magic 10-foot line to take, oh, well, yeah, 20-foot setback's better in case they swing a, a hole around. How often have you destroyed property outside of your easement? Is it a question I got? I don't think it happens. Your guys are really good. So circling back to a lot of the reasons that we wanted to go to the 10-foot setback to match the easement is because the feeling is 18 feet from back of sidewalk and we're two-story. So, as, as you get an 18-foot side setback versus what is a planning commission recommended as really a 23 with the additional eight feet of city property, those buildings are a long ways back. The other thing that it does for us in land use and in making this site work, and this is kind of ties, but it kind of tells you why I've gone through this journey. Okay? I'm approved for a 26-unit apartment. I'm not because now it's expired, but I had been. Okay? Uh, I look at what we're doing on Lot 11 with the 30-unit mid-rise. I look at what we did on Renaissance Place with the five-story mid-rise. I look at what we call Big Boy, which is the 287. I don't know if you guys know all the slangs for this site, but we kind of live with these, okay? So, uh, Renaissance itself is going to be its own little community. And what makes a community great is product mix or people mix. And so by actually going from a 27-unit apartment to 17 townhomes is unheard of for a developer. I'm looking at it for the community. I'm looking at it for what is good for Renaissance as an overall mix. And it gives us the diversity of our housing stock in this major development. And so, to accomplish that, as Francisco and I talked about, a 10-foot setback, it actually makes those units more livable. You have to have in the driveway 24 feet for the fire marshal for access. And that's not totally true because he's going to access from the perimeter. But then in city standard, we need 24 feet for a drive, a drive right there where the, the cursor is. So, we're asking for the 10-foot setback. Okay? Because you are the land use authority, if you feel you need a 15-foot setback, we could change those driveways. But I don't think that's a good idea where you're backing out cars. I really think that for this development to fit, fit the scale of everything, because remember, parking structures are, Bruce, are they back foot sidewalks or the five feet? I mean, parking structures are five feet. They continue across more of that frontage. But then Big Boy is, is a very large structure. The building next to it, which is our Lot 12, is, it, it's going to appear as a three-story and it needs more setback from Main Street. It's actually four from the bottom with the parking, but from Main Street, it's a three-story. And so where we're scaling down to two-story, pulling those to 10, which is going to feel like 18 from sidewalk, because that's what it really is, will actually scale the same. And so, it's, it's very important to me to get 10. You are the land use authority. If you feel like the commission's recommendation at 15 is what you feel comfortable with, I'll have to figure it out. It, it might take me a long time. But, but if we can go with the 10-foot, I don't feel that anything for the community is not served with that. I don't feel, well, I know that the utilities aren't impacted because the waterline is at the sidewalk. It's not, it, it's five feet from property line, city side. And so, the utilities all fit in there. 1800 South, 10-foot easement, 10-foot setback. I understand Lloyd's concern there. That is tight. But everybody's already in there. The utilities are in. It is servicing three-foot clearance. We're not here to discuss 1800 South. We're only here to discuss those three units that are really important for this development and the scale of the setback. Because the scale of the setback is 18, eight of it's city property, 10 of it's ours. And that's what we're asking for. I don't know if I've answered that one.
Sure.
Can you, yes, thank you. That was all very helpful. And thank you for recognizing the need for diversity in the, in the housing and the population. Just a quick question. What is the distance currently, as it stands, between that, the middle building, the, between the garages? With the driveways?
24 feet.
24 feet? So it would shrink to 14 feet?
No, if you take, if we go with 15, it would, it would go to 22 and a half.
Okay.
Okay? And again, that's not your city standard. I believe Lloyd, is your city standard 24?
It's 24.
It is 24.
So honestly, that would change, but really, the development and the residents that will live there are better served with a 24-foot drive and a 10-foot setback because cars are backing out into that. And by the way, in Salt Lake, it's 20. We do back out in the 20s. Okay? But they all have little cars. So, uh, any other questions?
No.
On that?
Thank you.
Mayor, I, I just was notified that Councilmember Higginson is trying to speak, but it's muted. So if you can try and unmute him.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's, um, let's open it up for you, Councilman Higginson.
Sorry to be a hassle. Um, during the narrative earlier, I didn't hear the item addressed about the height of the commercial building on the corner. And I, if, if Francisco or Mr. Knowlton could address that, either the favorability of the developer in the reduced height and the staff's position on that as well. Thank you.
I, I think I, I want to do that, if that's okay, Mayor? To reiterate, the planning commissions, the planning commission agreed with the staff recommendation in that the, the commission recommended limiting the maximum building height to, of that non-residential node or building to 55 feet, which would allow the applicant to build a four-story building that would then transition to the proposed townhouses, both to the north and the east, to have a maximum building height of 42. However, the applicant wants to build at approximately 35 feet. So, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, Councilmember Higginson, did, did, do you have any questions on that?
So that includes the, the commercial building on the west end of that, uh, building?
Yes. It would, it would not allow the applicant to get the 69-foot, five stories, but it was a limit of 55 feet getting them approximately, well, getting them four stories. And, uh, at, at the commission, the, the applicant said pretty much that they, they don't, they didn't fight that, that specific regulation.
So if I may add, Richard?
Yes.
What staff, the staff reported commission, which is reflected in the council report and the recommendations from, uh, planning commission, we recognize that maybe that was a little too aggressive as we went over that and we're comfortable with the recommendation of planning, planning commission on the height.
Perfect, thanks. That's the only question I had.
Thank you. I'm glad, glad we could hear from you, Councilman Higginson. Any other things that you wanted to share?
Yes. So, honestly, the biggest issue for me is that setback. So if there's any other questions that come up after the public hearing or anything else, and I would be more than happy to readdress them. So going through the staff report for council, the only, sorry, now I have to get myself organized. Page 54, okay? Which is bold on the planning commission recommendations on design standards for bricks, brick and windows. These are very preliminary renderings, okay, to hit the requirement for what we're doing here. The opacity will change, it will get better. I'm all for windows. The comment of brick as a primary material, I also am a fan of brick, but I do not think, or I would appreciate to leave that to site plan. And to, Sam Bowden's our architect on this. And I don't want to have him having to use a heavier material where he might have wanted a lighter material. So I would, I, I would really prefer, and I want it in the record, that I don't necessarily like that bold paragraph on the bottom of page four. Some of the windows that are missing are obviously just, Sam did floor plans and rendered it and we were on a pretty short timeline. We just missed them. But I would want to point out, and this is one of the things that the height changed, that red line on page 51 fixes. So, if you look at 51, the red line to the roof of the townhome, that's a firewall and we cannot have windows there. Which is one of the big circles on page 54. But with that step down and a step back, we will have windows viewing from that side. But, but so, the windows will be corrected, but they also have to hit the building code. But, but so the windows will be corrected, but they also have to hit the building code. I believe that's it for me. We talked about the four units in the middle. Planning Commission recommends we keep those. Those, frankly, if I lose those, we don't need to keep going. They're very important for the development. And that is consistent with the Planning Commission recommendation. So in, I have a handout from my, my surveyor on the distances and where those are, but they are as I represented them off of Main Street. And so in the proposed ordinance, I would ask that item before, the minimum setback for the three townhomes on Main Street is 10 feet. And that would be the one thing I would ask to be changed in the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? So you mentioned those four townhomes in the middle, that little island. What's the narrowest point there between that and then the townhomes to the south? Do you know?
If I, if I may.
Right here.
24 feet. Okay, any other questions for Brian?
Got one. So the, the, some of the comments in the report from Planning Commission related to green space for those four units. Given that there may or may not, depending on city engineers' opinion after the motions are made, there may or may not need to be easements or utilities placed in the easement between lot 11 and 12. Do you anticipate that those four units would receive more green space in that space between the two lots?
Absolutely not.
But what, you just go, is there just, just a driveway?
No, we would not fire plan where all the means are larger. In the landscape calculation in this ordinance, it's an aggregate 15% landscape requirement. If you go to hit the front page of the staff report, page 47, there is a pocket park that is being provided by the master developer. If you go to Francisco's calculations internal to lot 11 and you include all of our green space, we are in excess of the 15%. Stand alone without that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay, thank you so much. We will now open this for a public hearing. If you'd like to speak on this, please come up, state your name and address and whatever you'd like to say. Okay, we will close the public hearing and like to just see what other questions you have, counsel, on this.
I have kind of a comment slash question. If we can go back to, I know we're struggling on the, the screen. I'd like to go back to page 47, if you may. And the reason I reference that is regarding the right of way on Main Street. And I recognize that in this meeting and previous meetings, we've thought of the setback in relation to the height of the buildings. But as I picture walking down any urban area, and I picture this as much more urban than it has been in the past, and whether it's downtown Bountiful or Salt Lake or Park City or anywhere in the country, that sidewalk width and the setback distance is not directly tied to the height of the building. The sidewalk and the, the street furniture of that building is very consistent as you experience that urban core. And as we, we look at the buildings to the north of this one in question, the one in pink is already, the site plan is approved and it does have a setback of, I think I saw 20 on there. Maybe, do we know the setback to that? It's 20 feet. And the one to the north of that is going to be the same because of the, largely because of the electrical power that's, the high voltage that's there. And we're just looking at a small little sliver relatively to the overall site of trying to go, whether it's 10 or 15 or 20. And I can't imagine picturing in this small sliver really going to 10 and sneaking closer to that intersection when the rest of the block is not. And that makes me kind of question what that would look like and feel like as you experience it, not only the vehicle, but also the pedestrian walking on the street. Because it will be a wall. When this is built, all of those buildings will be quite tall and the distance from the street will be much more evident than what we, we experienced today. So with that, I don't, I strongly feel like we should not go to 10 feet. I could get on the, the wagon of 15. But, but that, because I, I think the distance between 15 and 20 is, is much softer than, than half the distance to 10. Anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on regarding that right of way.
What other thoughts do you have, counsel, about the setbacks on Main Street?
Let me close the window just in case, Councilman Higginson. He can talk with the picture showing.
Are you there, Councilman Higginson?
I am. Is it okay if I jump in?
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Bradshaw, for that. I, I have, if, if it were just a 10-foot setback or a 15-foot setback from the, from the street or from the sidewalk, I think it would be a different issue for me. But we've got, we've got an accumulation of distances there that makes me comfortable with a final setback requirement of 10 feet. So I, like I say, I think there's, I think it will be difficult to do work in that space. And I know it's possible to do work in that space with the 10-foot setback. And I think that I don't have an issue with that being, that will, that will be my vote if it's brought to a vote in that manner. I, looking at the site plan, I know that there's a lot of pavement in that courtyard. It's not going to feel very accommodating there. It's not going to feel very accommodating there with the little green, green strip in place of those four units either. My opinion is that the folks that live in that little courtyard are going to take advantage of the very nice open space and green space and amenities that the rest of the development offers. And I, I think that we ought to allow those four units to persist. So concerning the two items that have been recently discussed, those are my opinions.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Councilwoman Segura Bar.
I agree with Councilmember Higginson. I'm perfectly fine with the four units. And I feel like a big why's were, were asked or answered as to why it's important to develop, why it's important to the developer and the opinion of our, of our staff. I'm comfortable with a 10-foot setback and with the, and with keeping those four units.
I'd also like to address the setback. I think these are just like the tough questions because we have to do a balancing act here. And balancing, I am very happy to hear and to know about this mix of housing. I think it's going to be very beneficial to this site. It's going to add to the vibrancy. There, the majority are two-bedroom. That will accommodate more families, I think, living in that area. I, I think it's going to be visually and in every way a bonus. And I'm really, I'm glad that the developer, Brian, that this is what you're bringing because it probably pencils in a different way to do the 29 or 27 that you could do in otherwise. And it is hard. I, I really respect our city engineer so much. I, I respect Lloyd so much and the work of the Planning Commission on this. But in the balancing act of it, I think with the trade-off of the 10-foot setback versus having a little more wiggle room there in the parking area, as just putting myself in those shoes, I think that, that is a good trade-off. That's a, that's a good trade-off. And to think about the easement versus the setback, I, I agree. We have the best crews in the world, in my opinion. I think we have great crews in our water department, our power department. And I, I want to see this move forward and not get quagmired because, as everyone knows, money is getting more expensive. This is a good addition and in the world of balancing act of trying to get momentum and movement forward in this project and this entire site. I'm willing, I, I agree with Councilwoman Segura Bar. I would go to the 10-foot as well as with Councilman Higginson. And, you know, and I think the reason we're talking about it is because there are so many pros and cons. This is, it's not just a clear cut. But you do have to look at the assumption of the risk, the liability to the city. That's a legitimate concern. But I hope that we can move this forward with the 10-foot easement.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm prepared to make a motion. Mayor, I would like to move that we amend our draft ordinance 2022-09, item number four, that we amended from a 15-foot setback to a 10-foot setback and otherwise adopt the ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion? And I will just bring up to the council, I don't know if you want to consider now the item that was brought up about brick.
I felt like that was a site plan review issue versus the ordinance before us, that that would be addressed when the site plan went back through Planning Commission.
If I may?
Please.
That language is not on the ordinance on purpose. We specifically indicated that it goes through site plan review on item five.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Is that a nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you. That motion carries. We appreciate you. Thank you. We'll now move to the presentation of moderate income housing report by Mr. Storga.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. State legislature had changes to the way that we report our moderate income housing report. They had a deadline of October 1st and we made that deadline. And it simplified the process for year 2022. We were required to use the form provided by the Department of Workforce. And they asked very simple questions. When we adopted the plan, when we adopted the strategies for moderate income housing report that were required back with SB 34 in 2019, and which one, which one of those strategies we selected. That was all we had to do. As you recall, in 2019, 20 and 21, we had to give them numbers that they provided us. And it was kind of a silly exercise. They gave us numbers and then we sent those numbers back to, to them. Back in 2019, we adopted the strategies, which are on the bottom of page 63 and page 64, which was a strategy E, which, which impacted accessory dwelling units. The next one was allowing higher densities or moderate income residential development in commercial mixed zone, commercial centers, employment centers. And the last one was to encourage higher densities or moderate income housing, moderate income residential development near major transit investment corridors. The last one that we selected in 2019 was L on the top of page 64. With that said, I was the preparer of our moderate income housing plan and I chose not to report back on that fourth item. The state only required three. And the reason that I didn't was because of the substantial changes that HB Senate, House Bill 462 amended that specific strategy. And that's what I have there on page 64 in the brown. It was too much specificity that they were looking for. The reason why we selected that strategy in 2019 was because Bountiful City's land use code has sympathetic provisions regarding developments built prior to 1960s and how we treat those single-family dwellings and duplexes and that they are able to expand. They are able to follow an expansion protocol unlike a legal non-conforming structure that is simply not able to do so. So that's how we simply interpreted these five words, preserve existing moderate income housing. It was something that came from the former planning director, which I completely agreed. It was a very general statement and they got extremely specific on these types of programs. Luckily for us, we had four, so we were able to report on the other three. They did amend the other three slightly here and there, but it wasn't, they didn't have anything substantial. We're still following those same principles. So I felt that it was important to let you know of the big change from Senate Bill 34 to House Bill 462 with the caveat that we have a lot more implementation to do in 2023. And that was part of HB 462 that included items one through eight on the bottom of page 64 with specific implementation strategies that we have to come up with. So I will be working with the city manager and setting subsequent work sessions so we are able to report back in 2023. That report will be due on October 1st. This is a simple presentation. I'll be more than happy to take questions at this time, Mayor. But we don't, we don't need, this doesn't need any type of action.
Thanks.
May I have a editorial slash legislative update to this item? HB 462 was one of the big omnibus bills of the 2022 session. It ended up being several bills combined into one big bill the last couple of days of the session. This is, this, this issue, this moderate income housing report is one to keep an eye on. There has been discussion all throughout the interim of the legislature using the items in the moderate income housing report and the menu list that we can choose from as a tool with carrots and sticks. Adopt more than, more than three and you can have, you know, keys to do X, Y, Z. Adopt less than that, you know, face a variety of penalties. Loss of road funds is often one that's, that's targeted. And it's, it's an area where, as you've seen from, you know, the original bill that was passed, it, it keeps moving. The goalposts in this, in this case will likely move. So it was just a heads-up, colleagues. Expect this one to shift and change and for carrots and sticks to be further attached in the next session.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Any questions about this report?
No. May I, may I add on to that? Just Francisco, as we move forward into the legislative session, for you and Gary, something that, for me, that I'm always going to want to know is what, if we didn't do X, Y, and Z, what would we be losing out on? What's the opportunity cost if we do decline some of these carrots?
Yeah, it's funding opportunities with the caveat that if we miss something, they would let us know and then we have 90 days to fix it.
Yeah.
But it's, it's funding opportunities.
Yeah, and I would, I want to know specifically which ones. So that's just what I'm going to be looking for.
Sure. And, and as we have work sessions throughout the year, we'll bring that information.
You guys are always so good at that. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions about the moderate income housing report? Okay, we'll move to our next item, which is to consider approval of a lot line adjustment at 1848 East Maple Hills Drive. Mr. Chini.
Thank you, Mayor.
Over the last few weeks, we've brought a couple of these lot line adjustments to you for your approval. They're basically a approval of a subdivision, although it's kind of a modification of our past process to, to review and make sure that these are done appropriately in accordance with state law. Mr. Ashworth is the applicant, and his home occupies lot one oh two. If I could refer you to the picture on page sixty-eight, which shows the three, the configuration of the three lots. This subdivision was platted in the mid-seventies when, when the foothill zone was really being created. It didn't have the, many of the restrictions or qualifiers that we have now. Mr. Ashworth owns these three lots, and he would like to construct a detached accessory structure, most likely on lot one oh three, which is the one towards the bottom of the page. Lot one oh one, which has an address of eighteen twenty on it, is very steep, it has an average slope of over forty percent. So finding usable ground on that site would be unlikely. There is available space to be used for the detached garage on lot one oh three, that's the one with the address of twenty ninety-six. This was brought to the planning commission, the planning commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval. Staff doesn't have any reservations for also recommending that approval to you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have a question. I'm, I'm just, this is, I'm just curious if this matters, but when I looked this up on my maps, the address of eighteen forty-eight was farther south down Maple Hills Drive, and this particular location that's noted in, on this corner was noted as thirty oh two Cape Holloway. And maybe that's neither here nor there, and maybe it's a non-sequitur, but I don't know if that matters for the adoption of this redrawing.
I think it could be adopted based on the address or the lots. Or even by the proposed name of the subdivision. He's, he's proposed it as Henry Hills. I think it would be inappropriate.
Well, the, the thirteen forty-eight is like past the home.
I believe eighteen forty-eight is the platted address for that lot. So if the applicant is using a different address, we can submit a change of address affidavit to the county and, and adjust that accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lot line adjustment, combine lot one oh one and one oh two, and one oh three at the Maple Hills, number two plat D subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. And now we will consider approval of the reimbursement agreement with the Rainey family for the construction of Eagle Ridge Drive, Mr. Chini.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure we're all excited to see this come to the council. I know that we're, we're getting very close to starting construction up there, we're waiting, as an update, we're waiting for manholes and some of the other materials to become available. But we are going to start with some preliminary grading up there in the next week or so. As part of the discussions with the Rainey family about the development of this section of Bountiful, it was proposed to them that the city complete the improvements, and that the Raineys agree to reimburse the city for the expenses associated with the next phase of their subdivision. The agreement that's attached to this report spells out the terms and conditions of that agreement. As part of the agreement, the Raineys will dedicate the right of way to the city, they'll authorize a construction easement, and most importantly, they'll agree to reimburse our expenses. Using the tabulation from MC Green and their, their proposal, and our estimates for construction management costs, we've estimated the expenses for the Raineys to be one point one million dollars as listed in, in the staff report. That'll be repayable within fifteen years, depending on their timeline to develop. This agreement would be recorded with the property and would run with the property and require any subsequent buyer, should the Raineys sell, to also complete the terms of the agreement and reimburse the city for the expenses. The city's expenses to complete the road up Tiger Ridge Drive is about six hundred and seven thousand dollars. So you can see that they're taking the lion's share of the project cost, includes all the utilities, curb, gutter, sidewalk. Some retaining walls, everything that's needed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does the loan that, that we received from the county of our, our portion outside of Rainey, or their portion are, are splitting it?
I don't know that we've defined where the million-dollar loan from the county was going to be applied. Really, it's for project costs. Between the million dollars from the county and what we have budgeted in the street department's budget, will cover the total cost. Whether it's a county dollar that gets paid back or a city dollar that gets paid back, I'm going to leave that to the accounts, the engineers are going to build it.
Any other questions?
I'm happy to make a motion. I, I was eager and I put my things away. I propose that we approve reimbursement agreement with the Rainey family for the construction of Eagle Ridge Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, that's excellent, yeah. Thank you so much for your work on this, I know it's been a long time coming, and you've spent a lot of hours, Lloyd, so thank you. Ready for our next motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all.